I'd like to call the board, the senior board and trustee meeting tonight.
All right, and public comments.
We have two signed up for in-person comment. First is Brett Dayberry. And just, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say they can be at the end of the table there.
Okay, before we begin, you will have three minutes to speak. Uh, Laura will actually warn you when you have one minute left. And then when three minutes comes, that's what we'll do. So that's at the end of the day.
Again, I wanted to ask the board what the best way is to contact you. On your website, there's a link to select called Contact PL PPLD's Board of Trustees. I had intended to select individual people but found that that was not an option. So I simply sent a general request to the overall board, which is the only option available to me. After receiving no response, I later learned that the email system within PPLD is one of the person's first initial of the first name, followed by their last name, followed by at PPLD dot com. After trying this approach, I still received no reply. So I'm here in person asking the simple question of how does a resident and taxpayer best contact individual board members? The reason I'm inquiring is that I attended the PPLD board meeting last month. At that meeting, fellow members of our banner of groups called Shield Our Kids read passages from books that are available within the library district. Of concern is that these books are also currently available to school students through Power Pass. The reason these passages were read was because the readers believed them to be very offensive in nature. Their point was, their point was made when board member Aaron Benz and chief librarian and CEO Taiona Shanadis-Cribbs both got up from their seats and left the meeting while their passages were being read. My question to you is quite simply, why did the two of you leave? First off, I believe your actions to be highly disrespectful towards the readers. While it is your job and your role to be here, those who chose to take to read took time out of their day and should expect the common decency afforded them. My hope is that each of you had a good reason for leaving. You each have my email address. I would ask that you contact me by the end of next week with your reasons.
We have one minute left.
My belief is that the two of you left the meeting because you were disgusted by what was read. We are all disgusted by what was read. That's the entire point. If these materials are too vile for a board member and the chief librarian and CEO to hear, then why is it available for schoolchildren to access? What I ask is for the board to contact Shield of Shield Our Kids via my email or phone number and let me know what actions the board plans to take regarding removal of access to these materials by our school students. Thank you.
And our second public comment is Jenny Rush.
Thank you. Hi, I was here last time too, and I'm really sorry about the stuff you had to look at. Hi, guys. Picture this, you are in the kitchen cooking dinner. A stranger walks into your home, sits down, addressing your three children aged four, eight, twelve. Remember, not invited, just walks in. They start sharing offensive books, meaning sexually explicit graphics and total violation of children's minors' rights to be protected from such data. Note, there are federal laws now that overrule even Title IX messes. The children are living in a home where the parents are going through a divorce, so tensions and emotions are very high and painful. Within a short time, this person has convinced two of the kids that they were born in the wrong body, playing God for sure. You come out to see this and protest. They use the full body of the government to literally remove the children from their home, put them in separate foster care, more gender-affirming attitudes, so your kids are stolen by a corrupt institution and groomed in many cases medically. Now, this is abuse of power, and this is the true rape of the American children. The American Psychiatric Association, American School Counselors, and American Library Association play some roles in this. Permanently harmful ideologies presented in so many of the books we have shared with you all. In Colorado alone, over six hundred bills have been submitted in about five weeks. Thousands of pages and tons of attacks on children's rights, parental rights, and basically the whole culture of decency. Where are the guardians to protect the children? As for ladies who left the last meeting in outrage and horror for the materials, how in the heck? And I said the other word on here. Do you think we feel for our children as you hand them this garbage on the silver platter and then claim it's gender care affirmation? It's pure and simple mutilation and crimes against children. In my grouchy, not-so-humble opinion, I feel anyone allowing this to continue should be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. This is sexual harm to minors. I'm being graphic because I consider this so horrible. I'm here instead of on an island soaking in the sun. Solution, create a firewall, not allowing school libraries or children to access the filth. Please create a resolution, et cetera, to make this so. Anyone objecting is obviously not mentally right or lawful. This is a real conflict of interest. Who is guarding our children? And I ask too that you would respond to the Shield Our Kids group. Um, Jeannie Rush, grandparent, great-grandparent. And I'd like to finish introducing myself. Jeannie Rush, grandparent, great-grandparent, and grandmother. Thank you. You can laugh all you want. You're so rude. You can just laugh when your kids get messed up.
I'm not laughing. I'm saying the clapping is not appropriate.
Yeah, everything's inappropriate.
Except you going over your time was inappropriate.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Moving on, uh, first order of business is the friends of.
So, um, in the report, you noticed I didn't have any figures, so this is numbers. Remember, I like giving numbers. So, um, we had fewer books and, and actually, it seems like that might have helped us with the sale because some people weren't as overwhelmed in, in seeing everything. So last fall, which was our record-breaking, the best we'd ever had, we made thirteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-four. This March, we made twelve thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. I don't know where this sixty-seven cents came from. We sold eleven thousand five hundred and eighty-three items. Um, we do ask when people checked out, we did ask if they could round up, if they would round up. So we did get about five hundred dollars in roundups and everything. And then, uh, Bagdale is always interesting because I always go, everything is so picked over by Sunday. But we actually made more on Bag Day this time than we did in October. We made, um, two thousand three hundred dollars on Bag Day out of that twelve thousand and everything. So, um, you know, it's just wonderful because that's how we then give money back to the, to PPLD. I'd like to point out, we had seventy-two volunteers who helped for setup Thursday, which was setup day, and then the three days of sales. And some people just kept coming back. I mean, they weren't scheduled and they were like, I can, what do you want me to do? I can help and everything. So it's always just wonderful to see that we have folks who just want to do that because it's most of the time, it isn't giving back to friends, it's I'm giving back to the library. So it's, you guys keep doing what you're doing. It's, we're so glad that we can help you. Thank you.
Uh, next is the foundation report.
Don't have a ton of report on it. It's just kind of business as usual, and it's very in the weeds. But we are in the middle of, of the kickoff launch, if you will, to Library Giving Day, which is actually April third. So you'll see those hitting your mailboxes if they haven't already. Uh, and I would like to tell the board we have our night as a library event scheduled for September twenty-first, and there will be more details on that, uh, coming soon.
Thank you very much. Moving on, Mr. Randy.
Good evening. Um, so this is our monthly financial report for February. And, uh, we did receive our first, uh, large, um, property tax payment. It's a little lower than what I was expecting, and I was warned by the county treasurer that it probably would be due to the, uh, late mailing of our billings and all the changes we had at the end of last year, so that will eventually come in in months to come. I believe our next, uh, payment month is April. So it'll probably be next couple of months. Uh, Miss Laney is tracking along. Interest income is still coming in higher than, than expected. And I don't know how much longer that's gonna last. Our expenses are, uh, I think on the personal side are, are running a little high since because the, the number I've got there in, in the budget is actually, uh, an average of the year. And I'm still working on getting, uh, waited for what's happened in the past to kind of block that, but the actual is correct. Um, so our net to the fund balance right now is six point eight million. General funds, very similar to that. The only thing it wouldn't have in it is our contributions for the self-insurance fund. So, let's keep on that a whole lot. Join impacted general fund of five point seven million. Expenditures are, um, based on the reorg, we did reorganization we did last September. So you can see the major categories are broken apart by public services and administration. And then within public services, the admin group for that, programming, uh, branch administration. And all those right now are running ahead of the budget figure I have there. Administrative total is, is actually running ahead also by about two hundred thousand. Finance, I'm actually showing that we're behind on that number, and that's mostly because I didn't, I smoothed out the insurance that we have going into that line and for a single payment that we make at the beginning of the year, and so I'll adjust that for next month. But overall, we're, we're favorable, um, by a million. Capital fund, uh, they've really not, uh, been spending a lot. We've been working on the, uh, Penrose, um, project mostly. Uh, those expenses haven't shown up in this yet, mostly because we need to prove the role forward. And we're, that's part of tonight. And then, um, self-insurance fund. Again, that's, that's gonna be due to, uh, the property tax is gonna be due to the billing. Uh, timing issue, and then our expenses are actually running a little below what I planned. And, uh, our adjustments, I'll have those in next month because you haven't approved them yet. Anybody have any questions?
Uh, how is our revenue tracking compared to this time last year?
Uh, for the property tax, it's, it's a little, that's eighty-five, uh, ninety-three percent of our, oh, eighty-five on the property tax. It's a little lower than, than, um, historically we've run. And it's basically because the billings, the tax billings went out a little later, so people are choosing to pay their tax bill a little later is what I was being told by the treasurer. So, this negative here will, um, disappear probably by April, July.
All right. Thank you, Randy. Moving on, uh, Tammy, Public Services Report.
Sure. Um, so you have the report. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer, but a couple of things to point out. Um, programming in February hosted the homeschool science fair, so that was really well attended. People were excited to have that as a service, um, available to them. Adult education opened the food industry training program application. However, there wasn't a whole lot of interest, and so the decision was made not to host that program in the spring this year. So we'll reevaluate that again in the fall and open it back out and reach out to those who applied to see if they are still interested, but we didn't have enough students who would qualify for that. So, to let you know that, and they are also in the process of applying for the renewal of their EFLA grant for another four-year round of funding.
Any idea what's driving the low, low interest?
It has been in the past. It's a, you know, it's a five-week commitment now for it. Um, there's also been an increase of other additional programs that are offered in the community that actually pays individuals to participate through whatever funding that they have received. So if the student can get in and then get paid for the training, they're more likely to apply for that than ours. Yeah.
Support services. I think I saw everybody here, support services, or if you, if you have any questions for them. We can call somebody up. All right. Moving on. Yeah, you're next.
Good, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, so, um, I wanted to share that, um, Chuck Casey's reception uh, went very well, and, uh, John and that human was sponsored. Actually, it was, I was surprised. We had so many attendees there. Uh, and Denise Abbott and her team, they did a wonderful job. Uh, Michael Doherty, um, John Gerald, Aaron Barnes. I'm trying, I just to mention everybody. They've done a wonderful job working with John, uh, and Chuck Casey. So I just wanted to extend my, uh, gratitude to all of PPLD team for making it happen. So it was, it was a success. And of course, I'm sure you received an email regarding our, uh, grand opening of Penrose Library on the tenth of April. I'm very excited about that. As you know, it's been something that all of us are been working very hard to make that place safe and open and modern for, for everyone else to be able to use that. And a lot of PPLD members made sure that, um, we're almost there. I can't believe that first base is almost there. And, uh, so that's, that's exciting. And as you know, that we have a new branch manager there, Tikiya Johnson, and she was saying that. Like she just took the challenge on and took all the staff members' input when it comes to safety and security, and I want to change these things to happen. And it's happening. So, uh, again, that's another success for, for PPLD. And of course, thank you, uh, to all of you, the board of trustees for the support in this regard. So, and yes, and I don't know if you have any questions regarding other updates that you received from me at this point, but, uh, I don't want to steal it from Heather lastly, but we were also busy interviewing for a very important position in this. So, and I will let her do the rest when it's returned. So, but yes, any questions?
All right, moving on, ordering reports.
All right, so governance did meet. We talked about quite a number of things, uh, including onboarding new trustee members and just trying to get a more formalized kind of process or, or, or way of, uh, making sure we get all the things to, uh, new board members. So we're, uh, working on finalizing that. Um, some kind of informal trustee goals, so we had some discussion around that. I'm looking to talk about tonight, but, uh, and then also CEO goals. So we're, um, trying to get all those, um, evaluations from all the board members for twenty uh, twenty-three. So I think we've got most of them in, but, um, if you haven't finished your, uh, assessment for the CEO goals, please go ahead and get that done. Um, by then this week, I would request if you can, um, so that we can start getting, moving on, setting goals for twenty twenty-four and, uh, finalizing that process. So um, that's basically what we could.
Public Affairs. Um, that is Aaron's, and I don't know. Aaron let anybody know who's covering.
Are you guys trying to say something? It's really hard to hear, so just speak up a little bit louder.
Okay, so when you're turning to their.
So I imagine she's here, Scott.
So, uh, Aaron's not here tonight, but is there, could you give a brief synopsis if you met for internal affairs and what you guys discussed?
Yes, we did meet. Um, we went over, uh, really, I think the biggest, uh, point in a nutshell is that we went over looking at what has been hot, past policies that are printed. And, um, you know, my exact words, being new to this system, was this is more of an editorial than policies. And that is what, uh, this group is going to seriously be looking at, is looking at each policy and how we make it more direct and how it's an actual uh, policy that's easy to understand and follow and less editorial. So that is primarily what we're gonna be doing for probably, my guess, a full year, maybe longer, but, um, definitely just taking them one by one and making sure that they really do, or it's a much easier, anybody who picks it up can go, this is what we do and this is what we will do. And, uh, that, that we're trying to just make it simpler and easier and even more transparent, I believe.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. I had to put you on the spot.
No worries. As long as I can hear, it's good. I appreciate it.
All right, uh, any questions? All right.
Um, well, we unselfishly donated our time. Executive session to receive advice from our attorney. So Public Affairs has no report.
Scott, I do have one more thing to add that I forgot.
Sure.
Um, we also discussed, uh, the adopted trustee, um, got that form finalized, and Laura actually has that tonight, so pass that around to the trustees and, and you guys can hopefully, uh, get those signed up and we'll get everyone going on that and connecting with their different departments and branches, so.
Okay, great. All right, I didn't see any of the liaisons here.
Uh, council member Hagen did let us know that she won't be able to make it today. So that's, um, I heard only from.
All right, uh, trustee comments to any of the trustees have any?
Um, I went to the Chuck AC reception and opening, and I want to echo what Taiana said. That was just a spectacularly well-run event. And even though a ton more people showed up than I think people were expecting, everybody handled it so well and without, you know, freaking out or anything. And man, that man has a lot of fans. And people were just thrilled to be there. So I, and, and the med beds were really thrilled with how everything went. So that was great. And then last night, I was at the Green Mountain Fall City Council meeting for the library proclamation, and that was also very nice. And I really appreciate all the staff members that show up for these. I mean, after a long day to, to take the time to show up and be present for those meetings, I, I think that's really special and says a lot about the staff we have. So I appreciate it.
I also attended that event with Dora and Debbie and, um, went so well and was really impressed by the staff. And just how much work that went into creating the displays and helping to get the reception. And, um, yeah, just that was, that was incredible. So, uh, shout out to all the staff involved in that. Um, and then, yeah, I just stopped by the Colorado City Library in the last few weeks, which was fun because I hadn't been there for a while. Um, but yeah, nothing, uh, other than that, I don't think. Looking forward to the proclamations coming up in the next one.
Speechless today.
Um, Angela, do you have anything to, you wanted to provide?
Uh, no, thank you. I think I'm good. I appreciate it.
Okay. Um, I attended the proclamation at Cowhand. And it's always great to go out to Cowhand, uh, being such a small community. Um, I, I really cherish that relationship that we have with these smaller communities. Uh, appreciate Tammy and Liz.
And Gigi.
And Gigi, thank you. That, uh, have also showed up, and I'm, would also like to say thank you because I know that that's a pretty far drive. It's pretty far for me, and I live in Falcon, so, um, completely understand, and I appreciate all of you driving out to these locations and doing that. Um, I also attended a blood drive at the Monument Library. And, uh, that was, that was great. It was interesting. Um, I had forgotten how small that conference room is or the, the meeting room is. And really didn't hear the end of it. Broke the, uh, Vitalan staff. Um, they were expecting a, a bigger area and didn't realize it was that small, so they weren't able to do some of the, uh, options that they had. They really only could handle whole blood donations and not, uh, anything else. That was one other that I actually signed up for, and I can't remember what it was. Uh, but, uh, there was a lot of people there. They filled up every spot. Uh, they even had some people walk in, so that was great. I appreciate, um, the library hosting that. And I also wanted to say thanks to Tess for hosting tonight's board meeting. So appreciate that, and your staff. All right, uh, moving on, presentations, new staff and staff promotion.
So first of all, I want to introduce our new Director of Organizational Development, a new member of the HR team, but not a new member to the PPLD team. So Joanna Nelson-Wendell has been here, I'd say thirteen years. Thirteen years. You've had presentations from her when she was the YAS Young Adult Services Teen Service type of director um, for many years, but now we are happy to have her as a new HR team. So she started in the fall, um, but unfortunately, because of the way boardroom meeting style and budgets and things like that, we weren't able to do an introduction sooner. But nevertheless, we're still happy and she's still new because it's only been months. So we're very excited about that. Also, um, the new Senior Director of Human Resources is Timothy Allen, who today is his third day on the job. A board meeting. So he comes to us, has worked in the community and has worked in the state in various roles, and he's a JV and is excited to be joining the HR team as my replacement as the head of HR. So we're very excited to have him.
Great, welcome. All right. Business items, moving right along, consent items. Uh, any updates to the consent items or anything? Done? All right. We're just tracking along. Let us move on to new business. First item is decision twenty-four dash three dash one, then twenty twenty-four contract and year resolution. Attachment B is on page thirty-eight of your board packet. Attachment B, that's on page thirty-eight of your board packet. Uh, I imagine Randy, these are all except the insurance, right? Are they all associated with the finance team or?
Yeah, yeah, and these are actually will be included on next year's um January route of this. So these were two items, the one being attachment B for the um spending on our um library system. ILS, that's our consulting team. And of course, I I wanted to get that into the budget, so we can take care of that vendor. And then uh I'm just gonna move on to the next one. The next one is uh an insurance ad uh. Mostly this is on a separate uh form for you all to look at and approve or um because the um multi uh function um access that we had to build last year created a lag in in us being able to pick up our new insurance. So we basically added two months to the old policy and then this one started in March, March first. So um they weren't able to get me a number until after we met. And actually, he showed us a vendor that was considerably less than than the one we'd been with. Angela actually asked a very good question about, so is that rate going to last? Is it going to balloon next year? And so I went back to our vendor, which is Hub. They're actually a broker. And asked them if if it was overpricing on the part of the old vendor or uh what information could they give me about that? And they said, no, not necessarily on that. They said it's a very aggressive market. Um, cost-wise from that whole group of vendors um and the MFA not having had that in place, it costs us more money. Um, and the claims, I guess, have been down. They kind of expect it to um pick up a little bit this next year, so we will see an increase. But of course, um they said, we really don't know what that's gonna be, but we anticipate it will go up. Um, but they really didn't. They don't have enough information to to give me any kind of number, but um the benefit is we're getting it for the next ten months and and I don't anticipate it's going to double or anything like that, but um we'll see when we get there. But one of the things, and that's why this number is only eight thousand, should probably be more like ten or eleven if it was for a full year. I asked them to um cut it to ten months. I could get it back in in line with the other um things coming due at the beginning of the year. So we'll be back. Everything will be back on the same annual schedule.
Thank you for checking into that and following up with that question because
Yeah.
you know, that's definitely we'll make sure we're not getting a cut rate deal this year and then super expensive next year. So I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Alright, uh I will entertain somebody to read the first decision item key.
Does that include the attachment also? The vendor part or no? Okay, okay, I'll read it then. Okay. Uh, resolution approving contracts and vendors with projected twenty twenty-four activity greater than a hundred thousand dollars attachment fee. Whereas the financial guidelines dictate that the Board of Trustees must approve all contracts and purchases singularly and in aggregate in excess excess of a hundred thousand dollars annually. And whereas attachment B to this resolution includes the estimated purchases with a single vendor that is in excess of a hundred thousand dollars during twenty twenty-four. And whereas the Board of Trustees legally approved the expenditures when they approved the twenty twenty-four budget. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Pike's Peak Library District that the obligation under included under attachment B to this resolution is approved for twenty twenty-four for the purposes stated in at the specified amounts adopted this twentieth day of March twenty twenty-four.
Uh, okay, I can do that. I move that we approve the uh twenty twenty-four contract and vendor resolution attachment B.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? Motion pass or passes? Uh, moving on to the insurance policy update. You don't have to read this. I will say, um, I will just go with what's stated in the recommendation section. And recommends the Board of Trustees approve conditional renewal policy premium for cyber insurance listed above in table two for a cost of eight thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars. Increasing our total costs for all of our twenty twenty-four insurance policies to two hundred and eighty-two thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars from two hundred seventy-three thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars. Uh, I will. It's for motion?
I move we approve the additional renewal policy premium for cyber insurance listed above in table two for a cost of eight thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars. Excuse me, increasing our total cost for all of our twenty twenty-four insurance policies to two hundred and eighty-two thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars from two hundred and seventy-three thousand eight hundred.
Uh, are there any discussions, Angela or anybody? I'm trying not to forget that you're online, Angela, so. Okay. Uh, seeing no discussion, uh all those approving the uh resolution, I'm sorry, the uh policy update, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Passes, moving on, decision twenty-four dash two dash three. This is the resolution for supplementary budget. Would anybody else like to read?
I will read that. Okay. Uh, resolution for, oh geez, I'm the big numbers in this one too. I chose the wrong one. Resolution for supplementary budget. A resolution appropriate additional sums of money to defra- to defray expenditures in excess of the amounts budgeted for the Pike's Peak Peak Library District, Colorado Springs, Colorado. Whereas the Board of Trustees previously established a capital fund, the purpose of which is to account for all financial activity related to various capital projects, the funding of which comes primarily from the distribution of property tax revenue as an allocated portion of the district's annual mill levy, specifically earmarked for the capital fund as approved by the Board of Trustees. And whereas a total of two million seven hundred eighty-two thousand five hundred and ninety-three of funds previously approved in the prior year budget but not yet spent shall be carried over into the twenty 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 twenty-four budget. Now therefore, it is resolved by the Board of Trustees of Pike's Peak Library District, Colorado Springs, Colorado, that the twenty twenty-four appropriation of the capital fund is hereby increased from two million seven hundred and twenty-three, three hundred and thirty-two to five million five hundred and five nine hundred and twenty-five as per the attached schedule adopted this twentieth day of March twenty twenty-four.
Start a motion.
I move that we approve the resolution appropriating additional sums of money to defray expenditures in excess of the amounts budgeted for Pike's Peak Library District, Colorado Springs, Colorado, as presented.
Any discussion?
Just confirming, this is funds rolled over from last year's budget. Okay.
Yeah.
I could try and redo that correctly.
And then this schedule, um because it is so small, uh the first column on the left is what you actually approved for twenty twenty-four. The one in the middle is what is left over from last year that's getting rolled over for the total. And the numbers that are in this um text will show up at the last page of this.
You were referring to Wolves.
Yes. Yeah.
Other discussion? Alright. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Or the passes? Last one, and I will swear everybody from. Resolution for supplementary budget, resolution appropriating additional sums of money to be used for various funding sources that are not part of the district's general fund for Pike's Peak Library District, Colorado Springs, Colorado. Whereas the Board of Trustees previously authorized the establishment of special revenue funds designated purpose funds. The purpose of which is to account for all financial activity related to the innovation of and the use of funds designated or restricted such as the first. Whereas certain designated funds that were budgeted were very for during twenty twenty-three were not spent by the end of twenty twenty-three. Yet the projects are to be carried over to twenty twenty-four as per the attached schedules. Now therefore, it is resolved by the Board of Trustees, Pike's Peak Library District, Colorado Springs, Colorado, that district's special revenue funds designated purpose funds be adjusted for expenditures for fiscal year twenty twenty-four by fund as identified on the attached schedules adopted this twenty, the day of March twenty twenty-four. Your motion?
I move that we approve the twenty twenty-four Special Revenue Fund Prior Year Roll Forward Budget Adjustment Resolution.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes? Alright. Thank you, Randy. Well, that's your team as well. Uh, that being said, any other businesses? Why? Alright, we stand adjourned at five forty-two. Yeah, thank you.